You're all set?
You're on.
Let's stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought I saw Larry Gill sitting at the desk. Is he still there? You who? Hi Larry, how you doing?
Very good, you?
Come on up, one down. You've got 10 minutes.
Last Friday, Steve Wingate and I went out to landfill because of a complaint that was filed by a hunter seeing, which I'm pretty sure I've used the pictures.
He briefed us on that and showed us some pictures.
So, this is really iron warming out in that period. So this is not oil. And there's a couple ways, feel ways, if you were to stir this up with a stick, it will break up, but it won't come back together again. If it was oil, it would. But it's definitely an indication of a problem. This is, from best I can tell, is what's referred to in the sampling program by Zantec as the SEEP. And this is kind of an overview of the site. And this SEEP location is located somewhere down in this area here. It's hard to pick it out from this point, but I picked this Google map. The landfill is up here. And you can see a couple of things here. This is the drainage. You can see this. So it's indicating drainage is coming down this way. What else? The reason I picked the date of this, this was during the drought. So what you can see is barely the thread of the stream that are in there. This is site plan. And where I marked is the various locations. SW1, this is the SEEP. So groundwater is coming down this way. This is SW3. And the various points either are monitoring wells, or WP refers to a well point. So a well point is located very close to here. Zantec had been sampling these since whenever they took over the contract. That SEEP site has always been an issue because of the concentration of arsenic, which is the primary concern, very, very high, very high in iron, manganese, and then sometimes a little bit of lead is over. It's kind of what you get with an open landfill that was there. Anything and everything could be in there. But that is, that is the point where you'll get consistently high counts in virtually every sampling period we did. They moved that location because they felt, because it's so shallow, that they were getting issues with sediments coming up into the sample.
Or getting valid readings, right?
Well, I think the readings were valid, but they, but they could be confounded because of the shallowness you're picking up stuff in the sediments. So they moved it to another site, SW4, which is not really shown on this plan, but it's described as being 50 feet to the northeast of that. I'm presuming it's more in the water column. The numbers are less, but still exceed, and going through the file, you can still see those exceeding, this is for iron. The other issue we've got coming up is that because of the PFOs, and please don't ask me to recount what exactly that is, but it's the flame retardants have been picked up, and that's the very likely place where they're going. Steve and I walked that area fairly well. I won't say we covered every, the whole length of it, but I didn't see anything like this, any of the locations. And we walked, sort of like along that shoreline. So there's a little pocket, you'll see a little indentation, and that's where it's where this is located. It's been sampled before. Obviously, they don't sample it now, it's part of their program, but it's an indication that something is coming. That's, that's the issue, is what's there. The arsenic levels are very high.
So what's the fix?
Good question. I can't tell you exactly. What has been done in different, in different sites that I've had experience with, they dig a trench, and they pull it so they can keep it from going into the Beaver Pond area, and either haul it away, or put it back down through the system. That would be one thing. What I don't know enough about the site is where those streams eventually go. It doesn't seem to be connected to the Melvin River. It goes north to the west, but I don't know, I don't know where it goes beyond there.
We didn't get that far. So what's our next step?
I was, have you got results back from Zantec and the PFAs and PFOs?
We got this year's report, right? I believe a report is coming in, or has come in, yes.
That would be a factor. I saw, what I saw in the file was that they've detected some, the counts are, the concentrations are about half of what the detection limit, the concern is 70 parts per trillion, I believe how well that is, and they're getting 35, so they're suggesting you sample additional to get all the difference, there's a whole suite of those flame retardant formulations, and they want to get, suggesting you get a sense of what the range of those is, because as they find out more about those, they maybe come on, the state may put those on the list of things you have to monitor for.
Excuse me, excuse me, I think additional testing was added to next year's budget, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
So... Should we test downstream of this? But in terms of what we're seeing here, does it make sense to grab sample out of there to see what's in it?
That's been done.
Okay.
That has been done.
All right. Do we have results back on that?
They, they've been collecting, again, they've collected from the SEEP one up until about 2014, 2015. And again, they, the issue of its shallowness and so forth, the high numbers, they wanted to move it more into the water column, thinking that they're going to get better representative, more representative of what's in the water. That's technically true, but what also happens is a lot of this stuff binds up with the biota, either in terms of the algae, or whatever, so whilst it's picked up, they are getting some counts. Find it there. SW4 has been sampled. This is SW4. And what I highlighted are, this is iron, I believe, so those, there are some exceedances there, and the more important one would be looking at the arsenic. So relatively low. What happens, a lot of it has to do with the chemistry of the contaminant. So arsenic gets bound up pretty quickly, certainly with the iron, it kind of falls with the iron as well as manganese does. So pH is low, those things will solubilize, they come out, and then they bind.
So, have we sampled what we're seeing here?
Yes.
Somebody's grabbed a sample of that? A jar of water or whatever?
Steve got a sample of it, I don't know whether it was analyzed for or not. It would be better to have Zantec do that, because then they would have the sampling protocols correct. I did, I have an instrument that can measure conductivity, the conductivity levels are high, and consistent was what we picked up before. So there's no question that there is stuff coming from there.
Conductivity can be high due to a range of different dissolved metals.
Oh, sure, sure.
Some of which are of more concern, like arsenic than others.
Right.
I guess you mentioned in terms of dealing with the seepage and what's coming out of there, there are a variety, there are some different alternatives, but it seems to me the first step is to see exactly what we have there now.
Yeah.
And have somebody that knows what the, beyond that, have somebody that knows what they're doing.
Yeah. I think Zantec exactly, knows exactly what they're doing.
Look at it and provide a recommendation about how you deal with it.
Right. To me, again, looking at the analysis, and I won't tell you that I've looked at every single result, or that I, you know, but I will say that what I have seen shows that it is getting into the water column, that as you get away from it, the concentrations go down, which is reflective of dilution, it's also reflective, again, bio uptake. But you do have a Beaver Pond there, they're probably, whatever's in that pond is getting exposed to arsenic, and now if you've got issues with the PFAs, that's there. So I think, to me, if there's looking into the water.
The fire retardants, we have no idea on, and we won't till after the testing is done. And the testing is being done because of issues that came up around the Stantec man plant down in Maryland, right? So I think it makes, it's a good idea to go in and do that testing, but as far as we know, there's no indication that there would be any of the fire retardants in this landfill. At least not, not at levels like you see adjacent to manufacturing site where process waste that included these things ended up in the ground. I mean, that's not to say that somebody at some point didn't put materials that had fire retardants in it, into the landfill. It's a question, how much is there, and if it's in, in a material that's in the landfill, and that material's not breaking down, and an awful lot of plastics don't, it's just basically entombed.
I would, I would take that with a real grain of salt, because experience says that this stuff just doesn't go away. Any of these things, they don't go away. They're there, and as you break down, you, you just think of what was, went into that landfill, or any landfill. All kinds of different things, and as they, things break down, and things move and shift because of decomposition, different things get in contact with water, with whatever else is there, and you get, you can get anything.
Right, you can, absolutely.
And I'm not trying to put a scare into that, I'm just saying that, that these things are there, and...
The potential is there.
The potential is there.
Can I ask, make a suggestion? We have you, we have Steve, we have Clay at the transfer station, this is in his first rodeo with this stuff, you know, ex-military guy, and the guy from Zantec actually lives in town. I have found all four you people to have your finger on the pulse, and what is reasonable, and here again, both you and Steve have made a presentation, and it's not a scary presentation, it's measured, it's measured. So can you four guys work together?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, Zantec asked to be involved.
And you have an instrument, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Does that need to be calibrated, or is it...
It could be better. I mean, it's something that I worked with 25 years ago.
Does it cost much to calibrate it? Think about it, okay?
I've got, there are some things that could make it better.
Where I've learned an awful lot is from this gentleman, the gas meters that they have, the multi, they have little, what is it, the blue things that go on there, they're bags, and probably saved this firefighter's life at a recent house where it was, what, 1,400 parts per million or something? They would have been dead instantly, so I've learned from this guy how he's pro-actives. Okay, is there a seasonal element to this?
Not that I could see, I mean, Zantec could tell you better than that, you know, I mean, there is some seasonality to it, I would think. During the spring, during the melt, when you're getting a lot of flow, groundwater levels are high, that would tend, would be warming, but then it would also be potentially diluted more because you've got more water.
Do you know how far downstream they test?
I don't know. I would say that from this, this, this is the limit of their stations in here. This is SW2, SW3, SW1, SW4, again, is located...
I know Clay had that information.
I don't think that they sampled any further down, but I didn't, haven't seen anything that indicates that they have or they haven't.
So there's no way to establish whether or not this, there's no historic data that would give us any indication if there's an increase or a decrease?
I think they've held pretty steady.
Yeah.
The iron is, from that site, that SEEP point has been pretty steady. SW4, they don't have much of a track record because they've only sampled it three or four times, or whenever it is, when they made the transition to SW1, excuse me, SW4 is being the surrogate for routine monitoring.
The other thing is that since the landfill was kept, the technology has changed, and what we're looking for has changed.
Oh, yeah, that, the flame retardants, that just came out of, what, five years ago, when they started picking it up. The issue with that is that they've, they have seen it impacts, the exposures, and the arsenic.
Well, can we have these four guys get together and sort of... Yeah, should we leave it to them, or should we bring Zantec in and have a chat? Why don't we let them work with Zantec, and then at our next, it won't be until January, when our next regular meeting is, and report back to us. And you know, if we need to add something to the budget, that's... We have time to do that. We have time to do that, so, you know, we're fortunate, this is a compliment to you guys, is we have people who have a background, you care about our property, but you're measured in your approach too, it's not scare tactics, so.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a nice holiday.
You too.
Thank you, Larry. Travel safe.
Don't go too far.
Again, thank you for your efforts. Next is Jack. Come on down, sir. On a, on a personal note, from the board of selectmen, my condolences to you.
Thank you. What do you want to say?
Building permits, yes. All right, we have 98 building permits, 23 new houses, we've done 460 inspections.
How many new towers did you show?
23.
And that's brand new out of the block.
Well, some here down, some here, but more new this year than this year's, newer than the land. Couple of these are second homes on one of these properties, but they have a lot more new to the property this year than previous years.
Did you see that? Fifty-six seventy-four housing.
No, I see. They're workforce housing, we're all set with that, because we allow two dwelling properties of property, so that should be made up with that. The next thing on there would be...
Yes.
What that is, is...
That's a merger?
Back in 79, 82 actually, was a subdivision down on Tibbetts Road. And this is the piece of property here, where it says common area, all these people that bought, worked to buy these lots, had access to this piece of property, get to the lake, to the pond.
Pristine Beach.
It's wooded, put it that way. And then right here, the town has access for fire protection purposes. So these were never sold, I mean, there was a couple sold. Gold, Sue Taxman, here, which is here, so this is the piece in question, all this is the same owner, as well as something over here as well, so it was never sold. The only one sold was, this is where Kit Plumber lives, and Doug Barker lives there, a couple of these down here, so they're the ones that brought this all up, because they were trying, she's trying to sell different pieces of this, they were going to build, but in that agreement, you noticed that they're not going to build on this piece. And the reason the town was notified is because of this little note on this plan. And this plan was signed by the chairman of the planning board at the time, but it never, none of this ever got sold, so it never really happened, it stayed in the same owner. So the only reason the town notified is they're going to leave it, still have, give the town the fire protection access, and they're not going to build on it, it was just kind of FYI, so.
Is this road built?
Yes, it is, it's number of the cul-de-sac now. If you go this way out here, this is where the dam is. That's right here, this road, the house, the brown house is over here, the dam's right in there, which is on this property.
And the fire access is...
It would be through this mess.
So is there fire access, the chief's there?
No, no, there isn't.
Okay. Do you expect it, are you going to want fire access there?
It would be awesome to have it. It would be good, it was, it was set up that way because of this development, and once you have development, you have to have the fire access, because it's on waterfront, but it was, it never happened. And there is another spot that they could access, it's privately owned, Kit Plumber, who lives in this house, he actually owns all the way down to the water here, and it's fairly open, I mean, you might build a lake, a couple lines down there, but, so that's the reason this is here. And I've been dealing with the Realtor, and I said I'd bring it to the town, and they have a new, I don't know, this is the information, they've brought up a new deed and stuff.
Yes, in here, on page two, it says, Beechwood Estates Plan, the plumber deed, the Harding deed, the Harding Dock Agreement, all contain reference to the pristine beach common area with restrictions, is not to be used for building or sewage purposes, and is subject to town access for fire protection purposes.
Yeah, and that'll be on the new deed that they have done there, so.
So is there a merger? That's what I was kind of reading into this, that some of these lots are going to go away.
Yeah, all that's because it was never sold, so they're actually going to end that merger in this back. One person owns them all now.
Okay.
And they wanted to build down here, but because of this plan, the people over here complained about it, so they had to get lawyers involved, and rewrite the stuff, so they're doing that, and they're never, they're not going to build on that piece. These people who own this thought this all went away because this was never done.
Right.
It doesn't really go away. It doesn't, it doesn't.
The town's concern is that there'd be a right of way for fire protection.
Correct.
Yep. And I suppose it's like your dry hydrant program, might not be one down there today, but five years from now, there might be one.
Well, we were asked to, if a dry hydrant could be put in that area, when the dam project was taking place, and when you go to the right, get down in there, and you go to the right at the fork, you needed to go over some...
Culverts and stuff?
Yeah.
Which areas goes over the...
Privately owned, and...
You mean, not carry a load of a...
Yeah, the owner didn't want us going over him, so the dry hydrant idea went away.
But this would be an ideal location for one right there.
Except for the access.
Who owns that property? Is that Selden?
This property?
Yes. Well, we can establish a right of way, I would think. So... I mean, if you wanted to lay a pipe down there and have hydro. Right. Yeah. Is the road not sufficient in terms of current width and that sort of thing for a piece of that we're asking you down there?
It's a drive, the truck can go across, she was afraid that the...
No, no, not, no.
This road here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's well maintained.
Yeah, the main road is...
So coming down to have a dry hydrant here would not be a problem, is that right?
Without seeing the actual area that you're talking about?
Yeah, getting this ready...
Not a problem, sometimes in the winter time, probably.
But you'd need some clearing and whatever.
Obviously, there would need to be clearing and what you need to do to put a hydrant in, if possible.
The other thing is, there's a fire department support, who owns property here, and is, I know, he's on good terms with the neighbors there, who lives in his mother. It's a, it's a positive relationship. So they're going to keep the, they're going to merge some of the lots?
I believe so, I haven't got the gist of it. They were just trying to start this process, and this pristine beach area come up with these owners down here, because these owners down here bought part of this original subdivision.
Is there really a beach?
It's this beach, right?
There is not, no. To answer your question, the voluntary merger combines the eight lots and the common area into one single 22-acre tract.
So it's 1, 2, 3, 4, it's just someone else out there.
Does this have to be signed today, or can someone like Chip read it, and at next meeting sign it?
I don't believe it. No, it's just for information, that's why I'm here, just to show that the town will still continue to have access for fire protection purposes.
Make a great boat launch. That's what I was thinking. I've already talked to some of the neighbors there. Any thoughts, Chip?
I'd like to go out and look at the area.
So that area that's the pristine beach will be...
Common area, well...
Is it going to be merged into the, into the other lots, or is it going to be maintained separate?
No, it would be, I'm not sure about that one particular lot, I'm sure it'll be merged altogether, so, or maybe it won't, because then they won't have to park, but I'm not sure.
So...
They haven't got that far, it was just to that point there, the merger hasn't come through yet, so. But it was just done this way, because the town was mentioned on it, in the original deed.
Well, I guess my thought is, that piece that's identified as pristine beach...
Right.
Keep that separate, if they keep that separate from the merger, then it...
Well, in that, it says that they won't, will not build on it.
It says language granting the right of way over the original roadways as depicted in the Beechwood Estate, to allow access to respective lots, including the pristine beach.
That's just the Tibbetts Road, it's the primary road. You see that? They haven't come forward with this merger yet.
Yeah. Is the board ready to take action on the supremat?
I don't think there's any action.
There's no action, for example, just for information.
Okay. They just wanted to show all the law on that. We support it, I guess, right? Okay?
The town doesn't lose any rights at the hill before, is it?
Right? Not the nice, complicated thing, uncomplicated. Your next item?
Uh, what is it? Town office cleaning. What did I do with that? Here we go.
Who's doing that?
Nobody. Not a prize, but they said they couldn't do it at the time, because they had no help, and I emailed them back, to see if they could do it like in the winter months, like after the first of the year, and they never answered. Par for the course.
Yeah. So should we advertise for that challenge?
I was going to call like Service Mesh or one of them, just to see what it is.
I like the fire cleanup, a lot of people...
I know it's going to be more, but we can get an idea.
Yeah.
So maybe we'll have to add to it, but I think we should, it's going to be done, so I think we should cover it.
I'll make that motion.
That's the reason.
And we get that much?
It's a 525.
So move? I'll second. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I just have a question for the budget lines. I understand the townhouse cleaning and the town office cleaning are two different lines, so do we split, is that the total, 5.5?
Well, I, that's the total, and I have it broken down.
That would be great.
This building here is 275.
Okay.
The police is 100, and the townhouse is 150.
Okay, so I guess the motion would be to put 375 of town office cleaning, and 150 for the townhouse one, or maintenance, rather.
Yes. So this is maintenance line, 163. So this is the maintenance line, one sixty-three. Townhouse maintenance. It's twenty-four hundred and hundred already.
I don't know what that notice, town office, if that's brought over from previous year.
That was from the previous year, that was for this year, and that was for the insulation, and the windows got broken on to fix the ceiling.
So it's showing.
So that, whatever's in there now is going to go away, except for, I believe, this one fifty, does that make sense?
Except for the five twenty-five?
Well, it's one fifty for that building.
And then town office.
Three seventy-five for here.
Okay. So, okay, the town office maintenance is over budget now.
Right.
Is my motion still accurate? Karen?
The total's correct, and we're just, we can add to it, then just split up between the two lines, right?
Okay. Is there a second?
There was a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. And what do we want to do next? Other highways and streets, is that Jack as well? That's not you, is it?
It is, because the other part of the. I think it's to do with probably Union Wharf. And that's docks and bridges with that, is that under other highway?
That's docks, yes. Docks and bridges.
Is that under other highway?
It is.
Yep.
I don't know what the budget is at the time.
Currently, you're seven thousand dollars in the budget.
I'm not.
We are, and that's because of the design work for the repair to the Sodom Road Bridge with seventy-five hundred bucks.
Oh, I don't know, okay. And then like you say, I have, I have a new bubble in a bracket that was taken out of that as well as.
So it is you.
No, I had mine before that.
This is a selectance budget, and it includes pieces from Jack, and it includes pieces from the road.
Some of it was, I think they put up new signs on Sodom Road that came out of that. So for next year.
What do you have for next year?
I have like four hundred dollars.
Okay.
For two timers for off-road, to get rid of the old timers, and new timers have type of stats in them, so they don't run, but it's forty out, which saves money in the long run. And then I believe the monies that Tom got from the state doesn't go into that, it's separate.
Right.
But we're going to use some of that, I think, for design of that wharf.
Union Wharf.
Union Wharf, yeah.
So the Union Wharf construction is going to be in eighteen, it's going to be in nineteen?
Most, well, it's hard to say.